United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to our next item, which is our statement of meeting procedures, read by our clerk, Ann Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors' meeting of Tuesday, July 8th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cellphones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. We will now move to our public comment portion of our meeting. This is a time at which the public can comment on any item that is not on the agenda. So do we have anybody from the public that would like to come up and inform us of something, ask a question? Come on up, sir. Please state your name and what your address is, and you've got your time to speak.
I'm John Coler. I reside at 1545 Berlin Way, Auburn. I am a retired clinical social worker and a former member of this Board's Mental Health and Alcohol Drug Advisory Board. Today, I'm representing the Placer people of faith together, and in particular, sharing concerns about the needs of the mentally ill and substance abusers who become incarcerated. In 1965, I was recruited by Agnew State Hospital to work on transferring hospital residents to community resources, presumably to cut costs and provide more humane and effective services in the communities. However, when I arrived from Chicago, I soon discovered that patients were being placed outside the institution but without adequate treatment resources in the communities. It didn't take long for downtown San Jose and jails to become default board and care rooms, homes, sorry. The same was true for other towns throughout California. It's still true, even here. A year later, I was hired by Kaiser Permanente in their Santa Clara Mental Health Program. I found a different philosophy during my 27 years there. Kaiser has a large medical economics unit, which researches what assessments, treatment, and follow-up services produce the best treatment and the most cost-effective outcomes. These are referred to as best practices, as well as evidence-based practices. Due to the major economic problems for the past couple decades, governmental programs, as you know, have increasingly been pressed to determine whether there are more effective ways of providing services to their citizens. I understand that this is the purpose of the Bennett Report, in effect, to assess how services can be provided more effectively, both in cost and outcomes. This again refers to our incarcerated members. We don't want to repeat past mistakes with changes that produced undesirable outcomes, often by default. Fortunately, there is growing evidence of more effective ways of responding to issues involving the mentally ill, substance abuse abusers, veterans, youth, and other offenders. It includes more accurate risk assessments and a variety of rehabilitative services, which are reducing recidivism. It is vital that our communities are kept informed and become active participants in the follow-up to the Bennett Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coler. I appreciate that. I would like you to leave your contact information with my district director, Christina Rivera, and she'll come out and meet you at the back of the room. I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about your thoughts on that. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Anyone else would like to speak before the Board? Okay. That being said, we'll move on to our next item, Supervisor Committee reports. I don't see any lights on. Supervisor Yuler, none, and I don't have a committee report. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda supervisors that you would like pulled at this time? Are there any items that the public would like pulled at this time? And I'll go ahead and bring the consent agenda back to the Board of Supervisors.
And I just wanted to know for the record that there's a corrected resolution for item 15B.
Okay. Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Holmes, Yuler, Duran.
Yes, and that is as corrected, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, we will now move to our first item, and that is going to be item seven, Blanket Purchase Order: Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, Supervisors. My name is Brett Wood. I'm your purchasing manager. I'm here today with item seven, which is a request to approve, which is multiple requests, one of which is to approve an increase to our existing blanket purchase order with Jackson Coker, which provides locum tenens services for Health and Human Services in the amount of $35,000 for a maximum amount of $245,000 to cover services that they needed, ending June 30th, 2014. It is also to approve the renewal of negotiated blanket purchase orders with Jackson Coker, California Locums, interim physicians, for all of these for locum tenens services, which are psychiatric services for Health and Human Services when our psychiatric staff is on vacation or they have an excess caseload and they need additional services. The amount of the renewal is $630,000 for fiscal year 2014-15, with no new net county cost, and this would cover the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. We're also asking your Board's approval to renew these contracts for an additional two years if they don't request any additional, if they don't request an increase of more than 10% of that $630,000, and authorize me to sign those purchase order, sign those blanket purchase orders and transfer the funds between them as needed. These services, as a matter of history, these services are difficult to obtain, often, and that's why we've negotiated several agreements with different firms, and these do not lend themselves very well to a formal competitive procurement approach. So that's why we've approached these through negotiated agreements. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Wood, for those of us in the audience that don't speak Latin, could you tell us what locum tenens services are?
Psychiatric services, sir. My apologies.
And temporary help, correct?
Yes, temporary help through psychiatric services.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Yuler.
Yes, a couple of quick questions. Obviously, we're looking at a request here for retroactive adjustment at this point. I'm assuming when the staff report was put together, or you were being asked for the first adjustment in item one, it was in anticipation of increasing the services beyond the costs allocated, and that did, in fact, happen, and the vendor provided those services, kind of in good faith here?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Fairly significant step up on a year-to-year basis?
We are, the only blanket purchase order that exceeded the amount was the Jackson Coker one. That's why there's just that one limitation for the 245 maximum toll for those. The other firms were not, they did not exceed their amounts.
Okay.
And we did not have that prior authority to transfer funds between BPOs to balance those services.
Okay.
So it was just an issue of timing on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Great. Any questions from the public on this item? Great, I'll bring it back to the Board. Move approval?
Second.
All right, we have motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now going to move to our first timed item. This is a Health and Human Services item, Placer County Youth Commission Annual Report. Richard Connect.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of the Board. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care, joined today by Kara Sutter, our talented and energetic liaison to the Placer County Youth Commission, and she will introduce the commission and their annual report to you.
Okay, well, I'm just going to turn it over to them, and they're going to give their end order.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Reece Clayser. I'm the outgoing president of the Youth Commission. What we have is a short report, and if we have any time left, we'll take questions. You guys like to introduce yourselves?
I'm Jake Keller.
Or just closer to the microphone.
I'm Jake Keller, and I'm from Roseville High School.
I'm Matt Wong. I'm from Rockland High School.
I'm Ethan Wong, from Granite Bay High School.
I'm Julia Shavozian. I'm from Whitney High School.
I'm Tyler Tad, and I'm from Wood Creek High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dailen Arney, and I'm from Western Syracuse League Academy.
Throughout PCYC's entire existence, we've always strived to create a positive environment for those suffering from mental illness, and this year, we took action. We had four community forums for mental illness, and the evenings were very successful. It was great to see youth really relating to this issue, whether it was with themselves or through family or friends. And being a speaker, it was personally great to see my personal story really helping others. And also, in order to get people up on their feet, we came up this idea of a thought bubble, where people wrote down their commitment to act differently towards mental illness, both with themselves or with other people, and it was very successful. We got a lot of positive feedback, and it was great because it got them involved, and that was really cool to see.
So, we really wanted to educate about, educate and reduce stigma about mental health, but our main goal was to really reach students. So we did that by, our actions are Ending the Silence, which is a 50-minute high school presentation in high school classrooms, and promoting Each Mind Matters program.
So Ending the Silence is basically a lived experience speaker series, where it's sponsored by NAMI of Sacramento, the National Association of Mental Illness, and what we did was we contacted districts and teachers, and they showed support for it. So what we're trying to do is put together a system this fall, or this fall, where we're going to have those speakers come in and actually talk to students in freshman health classes.
We wanted to use the commitments, and we wanted people to better understand the Each Mind Matters campaign, so we used them to create this. We brought it to the Capitol for Each Mind Matters Day, and we marched with it through the Capitol, which was a really cool experience, and we're hoping to put it in high schools to, when schools are doing Each Mind Matters Day, and we also want to put it in other places around the community to raise awareness.
As one of the previous commissioners has stated, one of the main goals of the Youth Commission is to engage as many youth as possible in our community, as well as promoting general awareness about the commission, and we decided that one of the best ways to do that this year was to go on air and talk about local issues, and that's exactly what we did. Me and fellow Commissioner Riley O'Keefe went on the Roseville Lifestyle Show on 105.5 FM and discussed several pertinent issues that the commission was working on, as well as discussing recruitment opportunities for local youth. This radio show appearance was a huge success and went a long way in promoting the Youth Commission. Thank you.
Hello. Another one of our programs was something called the My Plan, which is a plan that is intended to set up, you can see right there, a way for students to run an idea of how to stop drug abuse and alcohol abuse within their community, and setting up a system or form in which they see fit to operate within their community, which has been an amazing experience. We plan to develop it more with the coming years in PCYC, as well as, PCYC did not get a chance to meet with you guys individually this year, although in the coming fall, we plan to meet with you individually, so please look forward to that. We do.
Thank you very much for that time. If you have any questions, we'd love to hear them.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Holmes.
Can you expand a little bit on the, you went into the health, the freshman health classes. Can you expand a little bit on how that worked and how it was received?
Right. So what we did so far is we contacted the teachers and administrators and districts in general, and asked them if they'd be interested in that program. They said yes, we'd be interested, and what we're doing is, because there's no NAMI of Placer County, we're using, or because NAMI of Placer County doesn't provide the Ending the Silence programs, what we're doing is using NAMI of Sacramento's programs in Placer County until we have, like, a system running. So we haven't run any programs in high schools, but that's coming this fall.
Oh, great. Great. Good job.
Great. I want to thank all of you for your service. This is a wonderful opportunity, I think, to give back to the community and focus on some issues that you think that are very important, and every one of you spoke eloquently before the Board of Supervisors, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank my former aide, Ruth Owles, who presented to the Youth Commission at their meetings, and now Leah Rososko has taken over that chair. I can't tell you how pleased I am with the success of this commission, seeing young people get involved in government and taking the lead, as you did with this mental health stigma issue. I attended the one you had at the State Theater, and I think you did an excellent job, so I just appreciate the work you've done, and I appreciate your commitment to Placer County and the issues that young people are involved in. So, thank you, but we also have a whole bunch of certificates of recognition, my notes are out of there, but I'm not going to hand them all out to each of you. I thought it would be appropriate to give one to the President, and I'll bring that down. And you have some fascinators as well, right? Yes. So these are certificates of recognition.
We have a photographer here.
2013, 2014, Placer County Youth Commission, Reece Clayser, Clayser, and his leadership as the Placer County Youth Commission President. Congratulations. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much. (applause) Since he's here, you can pass him on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Supervisor.
Good job.
And I think our public service officer went to go get a camera outside, so if you wait outside the door, we'll take a picture. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our second timed item. This is our annual Gold Country Veterans Stand Down. And is there, oh, is there anybody here? I'm going to present a resolution for the stand down. Oh. Okay, great. This is a resolution, we've had the stand down for several years now. You're going to have it again this year, the September 16th through the 18th, so we're going to give you this proclamation, and I'm going to go ahead and read it to you. Whereas the annual Gold Country Veterans Stand Down, sponsored by Gold Country Chaplaincy, is being held September 16th through 18th at the Placer County Fairgrounds in Roseville. Whereas the term "stand down" was developed by the military to grant battle-wary soldiers an opportunity to gather in a relative safe and secure environment while they take care of their essential needs, rest, recover from the battlefield. Whereas many veterans, the battles continue long after they come home. They come home in a form of hopelessness, depression, anxiety, difficulty with readjustment to regular living and working in society. Whereas the stand down is designed to provide veterans with the resources, materials, and contacts needed to sustain their well-being. And whereas the primary focus is to help homeless veterans acquire services, the program is available to all veterans and their families who need assistance with the effects of their daily lives. Whereas about 20% of the adult homeless population here in Placer County are veterans, and whereas the stand down is run entirely by volunteers, professionals, and concerned citizens, who give their time and services to promote the stand down philosophy. Whereas the United States Department of Veterans Affairs states that the nation's homeless veterans are predominantly male, and roughly 80% being female. The majority of them are single, come from urban areas, and suffer from mental illness, alcohol, and substance abuse, and/or other disorders. Whereas Placer County, being central to the region, hosting the stand down in Placer County, will afford veterans from neighboring counties, as well as Placer County access to services and resources they otherwise may not be able to reach. I will say that Placer County is tops in acquiring veterans, services for our veterans here in Placer County, not only to the veterans that reside in the county, but we take a lot of veterans from outside counties and provide services for them. And I'm very proud to be a part of this. I know myself and the rest of the supervisors have attended the event, and we're more than happy to assist you again this year. So, that being said, I'm going to bring this down to you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a little picture. Do you want to turn around?
Thank you.
Great. And if you have some words that you would like to say?
Yep.
Please.
If I could say just a few words. First, I'd like to thank you for this resolution. It's nice to have their efforts recognized in this way. While Gold Country Chaplaincy is the one that puts on, or that oversees the stand down, I would like, I would say, I'd like to point out that none of these people are with Gold Country Chaplaincy. We rely on dozens of different organizations, from the VFW to the American Legion, to Safeway to provide our flu shots, and on and on and on, to actually do this work, and it requires hundreds of volunteers. But out of that, we're able to provide services for hundreds of our veterans that are homeless and at risk. This year, we're opening up the stand down a little bit. Our focus is still on the homeless and at risk, but we know that there's some veterans out there that just need to be able to get into the door, so we're inviting all veterans to come out to our stand down this year and take advantage of the VA being there. We know that VA has been having some issues. Well, we have the people there, so they can't get away from our veterans, and we're taking care of them now, while our federal government is forming another committee to decide what to do with them. So I just need to thank all of the people that truly made our stand down a success, and encourage everybody here to look at Gold Country Veteran Stand Down, and either get involved or let a veteran know, and just show them that they're appreciated.
Thank you very much. Great. Thank you. Great. And we will now move to our 9:20 timed item. This is a county executive award recognition from NACA, and starting off, it's Holly Heinzon, our Assistant CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Holly Heinzon with the County Executive Office. I'm before you today to recognize one of our county departments, our largest county department. As you know, our county departments are frequently awarded a range of recognitions and service awards based on their outstanding service to our residents. While the Board is often advised of these honors, we don't always have the opportunity to publicly acknowledge or thank our departments and the work of our employees that have gone into receiving these awards. With that in mind, the County Executive Office is making a concerted effort to set aside time to highlight those types of major awards and recognitions. Today, we bring to your attention the 2014 Award for Human Services from the National Association of Counties, or NACO. The award honors the Human Services Division of Health and Human Services. In response to the downturn in the economy, in 2010, HHS streamlined business processes and created a human services call center, the first of its kind in California, to serve all assistance programs and handle both applications and ongoing beneficiaries. The center responds to more than 10,000 calls monthly and consistently exceeds performance standards used by private sector enterprises such as Amazon, Zappos, and the San Francisco Giants. The efforts of the Human Services Division ensures every day that more than 42,000 Placer County adults and children have places to call home and have nutritious food and access to care. So with that, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Davis, who would just like to introduce her staff, and we appreciate your attention to this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Duran, members of the Board. I'm Cheryl Davis, from your award-winning Human Services Division. I have with me the official certificate that we received from NACO. In Human Services, we have a term for these type of things, right, Susan? Woo-hoo! Try to do that as professionally as possible. Actually, this is bigger than a woo-hoo. This warrants my imitation of Deion Sanders doing his endzone touchdown dance, but I can't make that look professional, so I will spare the audience here. As Holly said, we, your Board approved, and we did a major redesign of our business practices in Human Services, and on August 11th of this year, it'll be our third year operating as a service center model. The staff built this in response to that perfect storm of an incredible demand for services, reduced staff, and competition from the outside private sector. They formed teams and reviewed every business process we had, and streamlined them, brought forward ideas for maximizing technology, and I do not exaggerate when I tell you, every week, I get an email or stopped in a hallway with a continuous improvement idea. And we were only able to accomplish this with our awesome partners over in county IT and county telecom. I couldn't bring everyone with us today because they're back there doing their award-winning work, but I would like to recognize some of the architects of the service center model. First, I want to showcase our leadership team, our managers, Susan Kimble, our Assistant Director, Sheri Rogers, who is our healthcare manager, you know what she's been doing for the past eight months, Linda Zalhart, who is our nutrition assistance manager over CalFresh and WIC, and Greg Eisler, who is our employment services and CalWorks manager, doing that great job moving all of our welfare recipients to work. Now, I want to tell you a little bit, the service center is actually greater than just the call center. It's from the door, you guys can see it. It's from the front door to the exit. We have received this award for our lobby management, streamlining our lobby and putting in great technology like a kiosk, computers, phones to our call center. And I'd like to recognize Terry Mixon and Alan Kern as developing and overseeing that right now in our, both our Auburn and Rockland offices. We also actually didn't create every idea, hard to admit this, but we stole an idea from San Bernardino County for a lobby dedicated eligibility worker. Instead of pulling staff every time someone from the lobby needed to see a worker, that disrupts work. So we have what is called a LEX, a Lobby Eligibility Expert, and Liliana Ayala from Auburn is here representing our LEX today. One of our stellar, you know, only in this, only one in the state procedures that we have, is same-day CalFresh. Back in 2010, when Congress temporarily ended unemployment benefits, our lobbies were swarmed, and we went from booking appointments out three days to four weeks. I literally was walking down the hall of our Rockland office and was stopped by Diana Campoy and Vlad, saying, "We can't take this. Parents are crying, they're breaking down, they have no way to feed their children, and they never expected to be in our office." They implemented a plan to bring in those four weeks backlog of appointments on Saturdays, and when they cleared those, then folks who came in that Monday could be served same day if they had all their paperwork. 75% of the folks who come in for food assistance walk out being able to purchase food for their children that day. We've been duplicated- They implemented a plan to bring in those four weeks backlog of appointments on Saturdays. And when they cleared those, then folks who came in that Monday could be served same day if they had all their paperwork. Seventy-five percent of the folks who come in for food assistance walk out being able to purchase food for their children that day. We've been duplicated, Stanislaw is the second county now in the state that offers that. Diana and Vlad? She still has incredible enthusiasm. They have maintained same-day under incredible, incredible processes which are pressures which has made them continually change their processes. Then we had to move to document imaging and task management. We no longer have case files, everything is e-documents. And we have task management. Our staff don't have cases anymore, they actually have tasks assigned to them. And we automated that. We stole the task management tool from Talarri, but of course, we improved upon it with our IT folks and automated a lot more. But I'd like to recognize Don Post, Patty Brown, and then our Assistant Director, Susan Kimble, who did 40,000 cases backlog scanning. Our consultant, the county's consultant for our county's document imaging system, said it would take 12 months. They got it done in eight months. And we have, we scan over four million pieces of paper and we assign over half a million tasks each year, eighty percent of which we have automated assigning, so Patty just has to worry about that other twenty percent. Then we have an online application system that actually Susan Harris and Vlad are original members of that team, and folks can apply online and not come to the office. And it takes away from staff having to track down paperwork, it's all there in the system. And of course, our best-in-state call center, Delsia Salazar, Lisa Terry, Lupe Spangler, excuse me, and Mizon, answering over 10,000 calls a month with the greatest service that does exceed private sector benchmarks. And then, they're enthusiastic. They do a great job. And then, we know this, we can manage this system because of data. I know Human Services is seen as a people system, but we can make this work through very, you know, real-time data management. I'd like to introduce Christopher Craig, who is our data person, our analyst. Eight fifteen every morning, I know exactly how our call center operated the day before and how many tasks we were able to complete. We get a weekly dashboard, we get a monthly dashboard, we can see trends, and I have a couple of questions from June's trends for you. And we can make our adjustments for continuous improvement. I mentioned our county IT, Jerry Gamaes and Kathy Buchanan are here, their staff have been awesome and have provided us incredible support. When we first rolled out, of course, we had glitches and Jerry was on it. You know, I truly appreciated the customer services, those three AM emails you used to send me as he was fixing our system. And I've mentioned before, we have incredible, awesome, outstanding support from telecom and Wendy Thompson and Rob Garcia are here, Dieter Wittenberg and Eric Stevens. Because of them, they push us to be state-of-the-art, and they are the model for the Affordable Care Act call centers that were rolled out in eighteen other counties because they brought us up first. So, not only do we have this national recognition, you know, we have peer recognition. We've had six counties visit us, we right now are providing technical assistance to a county two hours down the road, they're coming and reviewing all of our business processes and how we do business, and we're hooking them up with telecom and IT. But the state sends out folks to see how we do business as models, healthcare services, social services, the Department of Finance Legislative Analyst Office, even CoverCalifornia visited us before they went live. It's obvious they didn't model after us, but legal advocates come and visit us, and the Urban Institute came out to study how we do our business practices. But for us, all that recognition is only enhanced when you hear some of the comments of the public that we serve. Some of our families have gone through incredibly trying times and, you know, are coming out of it very well now. But we had one woman who lost her husband, never had to worry about healthcare coverage, said from the moment she applied, she had nothing but surprisingly pleasant experiences with every single person that she had contact with. We went above and beyond to assist her with her paperwork. Another gentleman said he was so pleased with how helpful and friendly staff is here. He said the federal government could learn from us. Finally, another woman said, "Thank you for the help we assisted and the kindness that we showed her family during a very trying time in their lives." And then the last one was a call that I received from a gentleman who said he expected to run into a lot of people with bad attitudes and not very helpful and the stereotype, I think, of government. And he said, "And I actually want you to know, I just ran into the opposite. I was very impressed with the way your people work, they were happy and they were making suggestions to me on how I could care for my daughter." So, we are ecstatic to have this award and look forward to many more from Human Services.
Great. Sure, 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 yeah. Yeah, I want to thank you for your presentation, your office and our departments here, very, very engaged and involved. You provide a tremendous amount of service, and I congratulate you on your victory, so. And I think we're going to take a, want to take a picture?
Oh.
I'll come down and...
Come on down.
Yeah, just quickly, if I might, before you all depart on that, you can have your award back. You know, you spoke a lot about the technology, the assistance provided by our telecom folks, the three AM emails, the folks coming in from other jurisdictions to review our processes and procedures. And those are great, and it's nice to have good processes and good procedures, but without good people running them, none of this happens. And I appreciate very much the pride that you take in your work, the way that that's reflected, because it is the caring that you demonstrate and the commitment that you put into your jobs that wins those award. It's not, it's not technology, it's not processes and procedures, it's the people that are trying to make a difference and help others. So, thank you very much for honoring Placer County with this recognition.
Excellent.
I'd like to just make a couple of comments, too. You know, you people do such hard work, and we're not aware of what you do, but we know you're doing it diligently. And the only, many times, the only time we hear something is when something goes wrong. But an award like this really sits at home about how precious you are to the people of Placer County, and I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Good job.
Great. Cheryl, if you want to step outside real quick, that'd be easier to get everybody in. Let's just take a... Thank you very much for indulging us in that brief photo opportunity with our award-winning HR, HHS department. We're now going to move on to item, Department Item Eight. This is a proposed charter amendment discussion, and this again is our Assistant CEO, Holly Heinzin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We're requesting no action today. We want to provide an opportunity for discussion by the board and the public, and board direction is may be required or desired. As you all know, in 1992, a ballot initiative, Measure A, was developed by the League of County Taxpayers that capped the board salaries at $30,000 per year. The premise was that the responsibilities of the board were part-time and that no more than part-time service was required for the responsibilities of the board. This obviously did not address the time required for constituent and community meetings, reviewing staff reports and meeting with members of the community, that's also an important part of this position. The board member salaries, as you also are aware, have remained capped at $30,000 without an increase for the past 22 years. Since then, job requirements have expanded, and the Board of Supervisors is now responsible for a county that provides services to over 350,000 constituents and a budget that is nearly $800 million. With this in mind, the committee, the Charter Review Committee, when they presented their report in February of this year, unanimously recommended that the charter be revised to state that the Board of Supervisors' position is a full-time commitment and that the salary cap of $30,000 be revised commensurate with board salaries of other comparable counties. Only three of our 58 counties in the state of California provide less than Placer, and they are small counties, Alpine, Trinity and Modoc. Consistent with board direction in February, staff has evaluated a range of attributes that would make a comparable county, and we looked at overall budget, population, regional counties and a combination of these factors. We've also had many conversations and consulted with community leaders and constituents. There is, we've received feedback that there is agreement that with the complexities that exist in a county the size of Placer, a county that is growing at the rate Placer County is growing, and with the number of constituent issues that arise on a day-to-day basis, it's important that the board receive a living wage that reflects the necessary time devoted to this position. So, with that, today we are seeking additional input from board members. We have Jim Williams, the Chairman of the Charter Review Committee here, who wanted to make a couple of statements, and we wanted to receive any direction or comments from the public as, as may be desired. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We would be returning, based on the direction today, to the board meeting July 22nd, which will be held in Tahoe, to finalize ballot language. And with that, I would turn it over for questions or hear from whatever...
Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, I just wanted, it's important for the public to know why we're going to Tahoe for the, July the 22nd?
Yes.
What's the reason for that?
The board, on a regular basis, two to three times a year, holds meetings in the Tahoe area, which is remote from this location, so it gives the opportunity for Tahoe residents and businesses to weigh in as well as constituents to weigh in on important board issues.
But is it not, isn't there a time constraint on if we...
Oh, yes, thanks for the reminders, Professor Holmes. Yes, there is a time constraint on getting this ballot measure before the board. July 22nd would be the last day that the language could be finalized, given that there is not an early August meeting. Thank you. Thank you for that important reminder.
And I would, I would encourage you, Holly, to get that language out visible as quickly as possible for everybody to scrutinize to the fullest extent that they need to do that, so.
And we would seek to do that, thank you.
Right. Okay. Turn it over back to Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Duran and board. Our charter review wasn't unanimous on everything, but we were unanimous on this issue and the importance it has, and especially in my, my mind, the importance it has to getting the voters the kind of quality service that, that we need. I think that we can all look at, at Placer County and be proud, but since I served on the board, it was a challenge for me at that time to be able to put the time in. People don't see all the work that goes on behind the scenes to be able to keep up on a wide variety of very, very important topics and be able to provide the leadership, because the departments look to the board for the, for the leadership, they look to the county, exec looks to the board for the policies that this county is going to follow. And I think the track record of Placer County has been exemplary. I want it to continue that way. So, I know it's a challenge for anybody in an elected position to, to take this action, but we are asking that you do it for the benefit of the, of the citizens of Placer County. And I think it's, it's absolutely critical. People don't always understand, but we do have a pretty dedicated group of people out in the community that are already out there willing to, to work to make this a reality. So, I would just encourage you in the next meeting to make a wise choice and go with it.
Great, thank you, Jim. Do we have comments from the board on this particular item?
Okay.
Are there other, are there other folks that want to speak on this? Apologies, I thought Jim, I thought you were, you were the it.
And he is the it. My name is Susan Prince, I live in Placer County, I grew up in Placer County. Honorable Chairman, Supervisors and gentlemen, I had the opportunity to work for the Board of Supervisors for roughly three years, and therefore, I also had the opportunity to see the workload that each supervisor carries in terms of meetings, meetings outside the county offices, evening meetings, rafts of written material that must be consumed and, you know, understood, the many constituent calls and meetings that come in every single day. And I know how hard each supervisor works to do the best for his or her constituents. One of the things that impressed me when I was there was the constituent expectations, which I think have risen over the years, and I think that needs to be acknowledged and understood by the residents of Placer County. This is no longer a small county, it's a sophisticated governing entity, and the issues that arise affect people's lives every day, and they must be addressed with intelligence and consideration and concern. And I think that's why each of you ran for your office, because this is not an easy job. The other thing I think needs to be pointed out is that as, as much as I respect each of you and as, as good a job, I think, Placer County, as you have done for Placer County and your, your colleagues and prior supervisors, as exemplified by the award we just heard about, I think we need to look down the road as well. And this county deserves the best possible pool of applicants that we can summon for each of these positions. To do that, as, as Jim mentioned, it's difficult to, to give up a lucrative position or to work part-time or to wait until one is retired before one can run for this office. I think it's important for the constituents, the residents of Placer County, to have the best possible applicants... best possible applicants for supervisor. And I think that requires that we have a living wage for the supervisor position. So to make this short, it's not that I think each of you will benefit so much from this, but I think the county will benefit in the future with positions that pay a living wage so we can attract a pool of candidates. That is reflective of the constituents in Placer County, and I think that's extremely important. That's one reason why I chose to be on the Charter Review Committee, and why I think this particular ballot measure will be extremely important. So thank you very much for your service, and I'm looking forward to seeing this adopted in Tahoe. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. I was going to get up and speak on this. I'm a resident business owner here in Placer County. One thing I didn't hear mentioned was that every elected official on legislative bodies in the county, it's not just the duties here, but what I didn't hear was the seven, eight, or 10 other bodies you sit on by virtue of being elected to this office. So we heard about going through agenda packets and meetings and meetings with staff on agenda items, and now add that to eight or 10 other boards. And the reason why I mention it is because I go before a number of those boards, whether it's Transportation Planning Agency, Waste Management Authority, there is the Air Pollution Control District, let alone the ones that are super-regional to cover the six-county areas such as SACOG. Add all those up, and then add the 55,000 to 60,000 constituents you have, and in my experience, this isn't, I don't know about the living wage terminology or whatever.
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand. That's right, sorry. Math wasn't my strong point. That's why I became a lawyer. But looking at that, this is not for a full-time job. You can't do this job and deal with your constituent needs and then all those other bodies at less than 60 to 65 hours a week. There's no physical way. I don't care how fast you read, you still have to have meetings, you still have board hearings, you still have all these other things that you do as a board member. And it's time to come into really the late 20th century, let alone the 21st century, and be reflective of the fact that this is a county with a lot of different interests from the Tahoe area to urbanized areas in South Placer. You have all the Health and Human Services items, you have all the law enforcement items that now the State of California has decided now get dumped even more on local, so you're now becoming, having all those responsibilities. So it really is, for my business owner and a resident, this is a no-brainer. This really is. This is long overdue, and people need to recognize what is involved. It's not just showing up at an event or coming to a board meeting for three hours on every other Tuesday. It's everything else that goes with that, and so I would encourage you to move forward as this ballot language comes forward to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Marcus. Any comment on this particular item from the Board of Supervisors? We have any more people to discuss? I will make a couple of comments. You know, this one was somewhat of a difficult one for me, both, you know, in a time when governments are being overly scrutinized for every little thing that public officials do, or every little perk that they get. But looking at it from the perspective of me not being in this chair and sitting back in Roseville, making and wondering, you know, ensuring that the decisions that are being made by someone who is actually putting the time into the job. And as Marcus so eloquently stated, it's, you know, you have all these things, and you can't do them, but you could not do them if you didn't want to be effective. And if you don't want to be effective, you know, you have a tendency to lose your independence and rely more and more on your staff to do that. And I'm not saying that we have issues with staff, but I think there's something that gets lost in that discussion to be able to be independent and make policy decisions. I didn't run for supervisor for the pay. I've been a business owner for a number of years and have other endeavors, so I came into this, you know, knowing that, you know, it was going to take a lot of time to, for my life, my personal life, as well as my business life, in order to do the county's business, and very proud to do that. But at the end of the day, I want to make sure in the future that there are folks out there that take this seat, that move forward, and they have the real time to dedicate to what we do. And that's it, from where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Mr. Laduka, you had mentioned that we're on eight different boards. I think it's more like 15. I'm on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and from there I serve on the Capitol Corridor during Powers Authority, and somehow I got appointed to the California State Council of Governments, and so those things take up time for me. Someone asked me not too long ago about what I read, and then I started thinking about all the books that I have read since I've taken office, just about policy, about wildfire issues, about Health and Human Services, a whole myriad of different issues that we have to address to broaden my depth of understanding. And that's what takes up a lot of time, and that's something that served me well, and I enjoy doing it, but, you know, I have to stop what I'm doing and run over to my other job to make ends meet. So anyhow, I think it's time that we address this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At the end of the day, you know, I really believe that this is a good process. This isn't like what has happened in Congress at 2:00 in the morning where someone has decided to give themselves a pay raise. This is something that's going through that's going to have full transparency, and the voters are going to decide whether or not, you know, what they want. Do they want to continue on with the model that they have, or are they looking for something different? So, that being said, any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Holly, for this item. We're now going to be moving on to our next timed item, which is a, we're going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Placer County Public Housing Authority for the Placer County Housing Authority Board of Commissioners and amend the Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan to allow for electronic applications.
Good morning again. Cheryl Davis from your housing authority this time, your high-performing housing authority. We are here asking for a very minor change to the administrative plan. It is time for us to open our waitlist for new applicants for housing assistance. We are down to the last about 150, so we are at the benchmark where it's time for us to open. The last time we opened that list was 2006. We had 2,000 applicants, and we've been winding through those. In order to expedite the application process, not only will we want to accept them by mail and in person, we want folks to be able to apply electronically. We found out from HUD, in order to do that, that we actually need to change our administrative plan to specify electronic applications. So we are asking you today to conduct a public hearing around that change, close the hearing, and adopt the change to the administrative plan. We expect we'll open our waiting list probably in about two and a half months. We're working out the details with HUD and with our automated system contractor.
Okay, great. Any questions by the Board before we open up the public hearing? Okay. We have a public hearing that's open on this particular item to change the administrative plan to allow electronic applications. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring the item back to the Board. Great. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions? No votes? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davis. We are now going to exit the Public Housing Authority and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and move down to our 9:30 AM timed item, Public Works Auburn Bowman Capital Improvement Program and Traffic Mitigation Fee Update.
Good morning, members of the Board. Stephanie Holloway with Public Works. I have a number of items to present to you this morning, take action on. The first item is a modification to the Auburn Bowman Capital Improvement Program and the corresponding traffic mitigation fee program to reflect a comprehensive update of this program. It's a little bit of history. The capital improvement program for Auburn Bowman was developed in 1994 as a result of the Community Plan. Since that time, we've had a number of small adjustments, increases reflective of the construction cost index over the years. The main driving force for this update at this time is a number of development proposals that we've seen in this area recently that have identified cumulative traffic impacts within specifically the Highway 49 corridor. As a result of these impacts, a determination needs to be made whether a mitigated NIGDEC or an EIR is prepared for the project. Because there is no funding mechanism for some of the improvements that have been identified through the CIP, we have no choice but to prepare an EIR for some of these projects. So as a result, we are looking to do a comprehensive update to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan to include improvements that would essentially be identified by these projects. There are cumulative improvements that are a result of development of the Community Plan, and so in order to accomplish this, we've looked at the overall Community Plan CIP. We removed a number of projects that we've identified have been constructed or are no longer feasible, and updated costs associated with some signal improvements within the Community Plan area, as well as added a number of capacity improvements that I've previously mentioned. The results of these edits for the CIP would cause an increase in the CIP, traffic mitigation fee amount of 4.2%. The overall cost for DUE for the Auburn Bowman CIP would go from $4,705 to $4,911 per DUE. Some of the positives of this would include, the inclusion of the new projects, we believe, would facilitate some of the smaller projects within the Auburn Bowman Community Plan area that have minor traffic impacts cumulatively through payment of mitigation fees. We believe the update would better align future improvement needs and help facilitate anticipated community growth. I wanted to point out a number of typos within your staff report on Page 15 and 23 related to the effective date. Should you choose to approve this project, it would be effective in 2014 and not 2006. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions by the Board before we go into opening a public hearing?
When was the last time these fees were adjusted?
The last time Auburn Bowman was adjusted was, I believe, four years ago.
It's 2008.
2008, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. It's necessary for us to review this from time to time because not only does it then engage the conversation around the fee itself, what does that do to, in some cases, some would say, enhance our ability to provide projects, then of course you reach that tipping point of, at what point does the fee actually then become prohibitive of you actually building projects because people can't afford to pay the fee? So not only does it engage that conversation, but the way that this has been laid out with the accompanying data associated with the specific projects within the Community Plan area, and I'm speaking just the Auburn Bowman item right at this moment, it's, for me anyway, it's been perhaps a little too long since I've dug into some of the particulars of some of the projects that are within these capital improvement plan areas. And when, as you do in the staff report, when you lay out the fact that the cost driver is simply a function of the projects identified with an estimated cost associated with them, divided by, all of that added up, and then divided by the remaining dwelling unit equivalents, be they commercial construction or actual dwelling units themselves, in order for us to truly, I think, say to the business community and future constituents that we're going to ask to absorb this fee, in order for us to truly say to them with a straight face that, yes, this is a justifiable fee. I think it's incumbent upon our Board from time to time to go back and look at what those primary cost drivers are. And to that, and I'm looking at some of the projects that are identified in the list that you have in our staff report, beginning on Page 15 and flowing on through to Page 18, 17. And I look at some of the projects identified on here, and I today, knowing that these were generated, the needs identified here were generated based on assumptions made with the adoption, and I happened to be here at the time when we did this, the adoption of the 1994 Auburn Bowman Community Plan, well, a little bit has changed, not just in our growth patterns and assumptions, but in how we do our business, how we conduct ourselves as a society, and yet we continue to operate under the same, largely the same assumptions associated with what we did back in 1994, what we identified as the future need. And I'm not prepared, for instance, when I, I mean, I could go through any of a number of things in here, from the fact that we still show a half million dollars for four-laning Bell Road from Highway 80 out to State Route 49, even though that's all four lanes at least all the way through, yet we still have a half million dollars identified in here for that purpose. We have almost a, if I recall correctly, a very expensive project, 13 million, no, not quite that much, I'm sorry, $5 million that we've identified for four-laning Indian Hill Road from Auburn Folsom Road down to Newcastle Road. I'm on that road all the time. I ride my bike on that road all the time. I just, I can't with a straight face look at somebody and say, "We need $5 million in order to take that two lanes, where it is two lanes now, and to blow that out to four lanes." There's not the traffic, I don't believe, there's the traffic on that road that justifies that kind of expense, and so should that project really be in here? Are there other projects in here? When we look at, for instance, we look at all the improvements that are identified in here for Bell Road and for Atwood Road at the Richardson area. Well, what's driving that? Is that the county and our county business that's driving that? Were there certain assumptions in terms of how we did business back in 1994, which is about the time I think I got my first email address, how the county did business back then that assumed that these kinds of improvements were going to be necessary, that remain in our business practice today, and we're saying we have to go and collect these kinds of dollars in order to make these improvements, even though we've radically changed our service delivery models here in the county? And so do we, will we still have ultimately that cumulative effect that's going to require some of these very costly improvements here? So for me, what I'm looking at is, rather than just saying, "We're going to assume the need is still the same and that each of these projects is individually justifiable," I at least, and if, you know, if the Board is comfortable moving on with Item A, since it's not my district and, you know, I don't have to account directly to a constituent, by the time we get to Item B, where you're asking us to increase across the Board 2.8% to reflect the construction cost, I got to sit here and tell you with a straight face, I can't, I don't know, I don't know this list for the Granite Bay Community Plan area. I do know that right now the Granite Bay Community Plan area has the highest traffic impact fees in the county. I can't tell you what's on my list. And so before I'm going to move forward specifically with Item B and ask for people in the Granite Bay Community Plan area to pay an additional 2.8%, I, as their representative, have to be able to look at them with a straight face and say, "Yeah, the original cost drivers assumed within there are justifiable, and that's why you should have to pay over $6,000 to build a house just in traffic fees." And I can't make that case today. I can't make it with the Auburn Bowman Plan area and the projects that are assumed there. I sure as heck can't make it in the Granite Bay area and on Item C with the Roseville one. I can't make it today. So I'm not saying no, that once I've had the opportunity to internalize some of these things, once we sat down and said, "Do we really need Indian Hill Road to be four lanes all the way through to accommodate the traffic that is there now and with the build-out that we're expecting in that area?" Once we've had a review of those, and I can then look at, whether it's an Auburn business owner or a Granite Bay resident, I can look at them in the face and say, "Yes, these are the improvements we need, and therefore..." the improvements we need, and therefore this fee is justified," then I can cast that vote, I'm just not there today. The problem that you have today is, there's only three of us. And so, what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is simply make a motion to table this item, these items, these three items, perhaps come back, date certain, and pick these up after maybe Public Works has had a chance to meet with each of the supervisors, particularly, I would think, on item B, each of the supervisors, to kind of go over this list and say, "Are these assumptions still correct? Is this, are these the kinds of projects we still think we need?" Understanding that, you know, then it might tip us over into Michael's world, because we have EIRs that are done, that identify particular needs and unavoidable consequences and all those other things. So, it may very well tip us over into Michael's world where we have to say, "All right, the Granite Bay Community Plan, we did a traffic circulation element update in 2005, do we think that this is still a reliable assumption and these are feasible projects that can be constructed, or do some of these need to be stripped out? What does that do?" And it may, it may send us down that road, but if that's what it takes to make sure that we're not just making assumptions based off of old data, and we can, I at least, can look my constituents in the eye and say, "There's a reason why you're paying the most of any traffic impact area," that's what it's going to take for me.
Supervisor, I was going to make a similar recommendation based on the fact that our District 5 supervisor isn't here, as well as our District 2 supervisor, and I share the same concerns for item C, so why don't we, you know, if there's a second to that motion, we can take this up on August 26th, if that's the will of the board.
August 26th, okay, yeah, that's right, I'll second that. It is a public hearing, I think, tomorrow.
I haven't opened the public hearing yet. Did, you want me to open up the public hearing?
Well, I, I don't know if you should, as opposed to simply right now, what my motion would be is that we table the item and say, "We want to take comments based on the motion," that is.
Right, so I'm gonna...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, if you could have a discussion at least on the suggestion, maybe a slight modification to that if possible?
Yeah, why don't we, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard in Roseville. This is a rather unique circumstance for me, I've been doing this almost three decades, and I think I can count the number of fee increases I've rose up at a hearing to support on probably not all the fingers on one hand, but I'd like to express my appreciation to your staff, particularly Mr. Graham, Ms. Holloway, for bringing this forward. Ms. Holloway mentioned issues relative to environmental review and what kicks in on mitigation for projects, but this is also a economic development issue and an issue for projects feasibility. Currently without, and I'm just looking at item A, the Auburn Bowman Community Plan fee update, that with a fairly modest increase in fees, by placing certain improvements out into the fee program, you avoid the situation we've had for the last 20 years, which is, as a project comes forward, let's say you're 10 percent of the intersection's impact. There's no fee program, so you're required to put in the improvement offsite and then wait for reimbursement, which may or may not happen, may take years to happen. When you pencil that out, projects just don't go forward. And I've represented several of those over time that come in with such massive improvements that everyone contributes to, every new project North Auburn contributes to, they all have a piece. If they're all contributing, the approval one gets built quicker, because then you have a reimbursement mechanism or you get fee credits for building, you know, way in above your legally required fair share matter. The county's got to impose in conditions of approval or mitigation measures by state law, you don't have a choice on that for people to do these improvements, but it will allow projects to come forward who otherwise face the situation of, "I have to bear the whole cost of some fairly major improvements and wait for someone at some time unforeseen in the future to pay me back their fair share and the money dribbles in. Meanwhile, I had to go out and get a bank loan to finance a $5 million improvement, of which I had a $400,000 requirement to actually mitigate my fair share."
Counselor, is there a timeliness issue?
Yeah, absolutely, there are projects right now through the process, some are in improvement plan stage.
Is waiting until August 26th? I don't think that there is a debate as to whether or not the board is going to take this action. I think what the issue is, is that there's, there needs a little bit more time to flesh this out. Is there a timeliness issue related to the August 26th date?
Item A, yes, there is.
Please, and what is that?
There are environmental documents being prepared currently, staff reports, staff, Mr. Johnson and his staff have to prepare conditions of approval, and at that point, they won't be able to prepare. We have projects that won't be able to finish their review by county departments and be able to move forward in the planning process, because they simply, no one knows how to condition them. And so, no one knows how to prepare the environmental document. So, in this case, it could have an effect. We also know of at least one major project that is looking at working on preparing improvement plans, it's a situation of project feasibility. If they have to come up out of pocket and pay for all these improvements that are set forth and wait for fair share item, that affects what they're doing and whether they go forward with improvement plans to be able to pull the trigger, because those are very expensive plans to be able to prepare. So, on, at least on item A, I would ask that you, if the board pleases move forward today, defer the others. I mean, this is something, I mean, I went to the North State BIA and I asked, this is the increase, these are the improvements, and I would note that some of the improvements that Mr. Euler mentioned, the overall cost is $5 million, but the fee component share is sometimes $900,000 or $300,000, and they're looking at other sources. So, for example, the Indian Hills Road, it's $900,000 is the fee program, unless the federal or state comes up with 4.1 million, that doesn't move forward, but allows the ability for the projects creating impacts to mitigate in an adopted fee program, and so that's why when going to the North State BIA, they didn't have concerns, because, and we look at every fee increase in the region. This is something that is of great concern as we look at costs, but we went through, they, I sent this to them, I went through the packet, and I said, "This, for people that are looking to bring forward projects in North Auburn, this is not a concern, this is actually something that's very welcome, and we appreciate your staff's effort in bringing this to you today." So, we would ask that you act at least on item A today, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I'm not seeing the urgency here, I mean, what, can you expand more on the...
Mr. Chairman, Ken. Maybe I'll take a shot at the urgency, and then maybe an option that might be available to your board that might address all the issues that may be of concern. I think the concern that Mr. Laduka has right now, there are some projects that have to make a determination now whether they go an EIR or a negative declaration. They've been moving forward with the assumption that this would be, that this gets passed, which means we've addressed the significant impact, and they can move forward with a much simpler process. I don't know how tight it is, but I know it's right there, the timeframe where it does affect them directly. An option that may be available for your board's consideration, B and C are definitely longer term, and I think those can wait and we can go through that process. Even on A, if your board would approve that item today, that is one step in time today that you could choose to approve, but we would agree to revise it, because I think Mr. Euler's suggestion about revising and looking at all, all the CIPs is a very valid one. It's a very large effort, and that's why we try not to do it very often, but particularly in Auburn Bowman, it has been 20 years or whatever since the last community plan. Would that be a great effort? I think so. There's nothing that prevents us, prevents us from approving A today, and then as we go forward, we agree as staff with your direction to go and revise and look at all the CIPs, and it can be redone, and go down or go whatever it is that people decide they want to see their community be from a transportation network. So, I'd offer that up as an alternative.
I'm open to my brethren here influencing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw the second to the motion of all three, tabling all three items, and move forward with the Auburn Bowman Capital Improvement Program. We have the Costco project, the Timberline project, we have John L. Sullivan Project and Highway 49. All of the members, the people that are participating in this agree with Mr. Laduka, as he eloquently stated, and so I would appreciate the board if we could move forward with 5A.
And is that on, including the condition that all the CIPs are reviewed?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Well, with the, just technically, I mean, I'm a bureaucratic here, but technically, with withdrawal, the second, my motion dies, and therefore, we're back at the point of having the public hearing, at least on, and we can go ahead and open public hearing on the Auburn Bowman one, hold the public hearing, take our vote on a motion that would be made on the, and I'm sure Supervisor Holmes will be happy to make a motion once we've had the public hearing, and then we can, then I will reintroduce the motion at that point on items B and C.
Thank you for the roadmap, I'm going to go ahead and open up the motion, or open up the hearing on this item eight, or 9A. Any discussion?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gary Parker, I am project manager for the Timberline Project, which is owned by Martin Harmon, and we have been working diligently over the past couple of years to finalize our improvement plans, all of our permitting with the Corps of Engineers, which we're actually getting close, I'm told. And we recently reviewed the Auburn Bowman CIP update, and we are in concurrence with it. It has a major effect on several conditions we have on our, on our project, and it would be beneficial to the project if we could move forward with an approval of that portion of the update today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Don't have any questions.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments during this hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the board.
Again, I move that the board adopts item 5A, the Auburn Bowman Community Capital Improvement Program and Traffic Migration Fee Update.
With the associated direction?
With the associated direction, yes.
With regards to the CIP review?
Right.
Okay, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstention, any no votes? Okay, the motion carries. We'll now move on to items B and C.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, Ken, while you're still here, the, you indicated that it's going to be a big effort. What I'm envisioning is that you would have the opportunity to sit down with each supervisor for the associated improvement plan area that works with each of the community plans and review the elements, I mean, at least what I'm looking for, is I want to review each of the elements that are the primary cost drivers that result in the $6,000 per D, dwelling unit, DUE, fee that we're looking at in the Granite Bay area, I want to make sure I understand what those are. And so, I don't know how long you think this process is going to take, I don't know if identifying a date certain makes sense at this point, or if we want to simply allow you to go through that process and then we re-agendize when you think it's ready to come back.
I would suggest we re-agendize, because I think what I'll do is reach out to each one of you with all the areas, and we'll talk about those. I do believe most of our CIPs are developed directly from each community plan. The community plan says you're going to build this, and we just put it in there.
Right.
And so, there may be a discussion about those that may need to be revised in order to make this all work, and then we can make a judgment as to what may be the best course of action. Some may be a little quicker, the joint fee with the city of Roseville, it is very important that we be on board with our partner, I believe our partner has already made the adjustment, so I'll probably be pushing on that one to get that one done first, because it's not fair for Roseville to be charging more and us to be charging less, that needs to get resolved one way or another. But we have always more time with our countywide program, that is just us, and we will probably pick and choose the ones that are easier, the ones that are harder, and try to get through all of them over a period of time. What's most likely to happen is that we will approve them piecemeal, so that, or, well, depending on how long, we may approve, ask, have those approved piecemeal if some of them require community plan changes, things that we may not be in a position to do right now.
So, then, what I think I heard you just say is that the motion should be simply to table the items and they'll be brought back by staff at an appropriate time?
Correct.
Okay, then I make that motion.
All right, we have motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it sounds like there's no no votes, no abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our last timed item, which is going to be our Plaster County Audit Committee Annual Report. Mr. Nader.
Good morning, Chairman Durant, Supervisors Holmes and Euler. As you stated, this is our annual report for the Audit Committee, which I'm honored to serve on, and I have the pleasure of serving with Supervisors Durant and Holmes on that committee. And I want to thank you, you, the board reappointed me earlier this year to the committee, so thank you for that honor. And I had, today, also in addition, Andy Sis, Auditor Controller, and Nicole Howard, Assistant Auditor Controller are here, in case you have real specific questions, we can ask, have them step up too. My comments are going to be pretty brief, you've got a two-page report, hopefully you've read it, obviously two of you have already intimately know it, because you serve on that committee, and my guess is the 15 committees that you mentioned, Supervisor Holmes, probably didn't include this one, so I think you folks obviously spend a lot more time on issues than I think anybody realizes. In fact, as you know, I was, chaired the previous Charter Review Committee, and we did a study, and I think we came up with 53 hours a week was on an average for a supervisor, and we felt that that was even pretty a conservative number, so I'm hoping that the voters will realize that they have a tremendous asset and the commitment that you folks make, and they need to invest in that asset, so. As you know, I have a banking background, so I have a real passion for fiscal accountability, and audit to me is the most efficient and objective means of verifying policies, procedures, and financial processes are being followed. And so, I'm pleased that there's a real commitment here to this, both through the office, the auditor controller, but also I want to commend the county executive and his staff, because when we have our meetings, often he attends, as well as his senior staff, and to me, that shows a real commitment to the integrity of how things are done in this county. And so, I appreciate that, and also that the county executive has been supportive of adding more staff to the audit group, because we, obviously, there's a, as the county grows, there's more need for, to make sure that internally that all functions are performing as they should, so thank you very much for the continued support of the audit process in the county. Again, you've had the report, it's, obviously, there's been a lot of things done internally, there's been a lot of department head changes in the last year, which necessitates a pretty lengthy process of going in and doing reviews on those departments. If you have questions on the single audit report when I get done, or any of the other reports that you've had in front of you on this, we'll, again, I will call on either Andy or Nicole to address that, but there's a couple other things that I wanted to mention to you that related to this, is there was a peer review that was done recently, and this afternoon, we're having our next, our quarterly audit committee report, and we'll go over that peer review that was done by Yolo County, but I just wanted to mention very briefly that they, they come in, and this is something that's obviously all the counties kind of share this, so that best practices are obviously shared between the counties, and Yolo County looked at 47 different categories of processes that they go through in the audit department here in Plaster County. And overall, it's a good report, they did have a few observations of things that they had suggested they might want to change, but in my opinion, after reviewing the report, there was nothing that would have impaired the effectiveness of their work by the county Audit Department. As you know, we are changing our external auditors. I first, I want to say that Macias, Chinty, and O'Connell did an outstanding job for the county, and through the RFP process, we now have a new external auditor who is going to be at our meeting this afternoon at 1:30, so you get a chance to meet them. The firm... at 1:30. So, we get a chance to meet them. The firm is for Rink, if I'm saying that correctly, Tryon and Day. And in the future, I will only refer to them as VTD, make the process a little easier. So, I would, I would open it up. If you have any questions, or if you want me to amplify on anything, I would be glad to do that. So, any question?
I just want to say, it's really a comfort to sit on this audit committee because I, you know, we handle an almost $800 million budget. And Andy, Staff, Nicole, they really dig down, make sure that everything's done properly. And it gives me a sense of comfort knowing that our money is being spent wisely and being monitored wisely. So, and Wayne, I can't thank you enough for your service on, on the audit committee. You're, when, when we formed this committee, I thought of you right away. You're the guy that needed to be on this committee. So, thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. I appreciate that. I, if I could impose on you just for one more moment.
Go ahead.
Appreciate it on a off-subject here. As most of you know, I serve on, on the Board of Trustees for William Jessup University. And I've had the honor of doing that for about six years now. The university moved from San Jose 10 years ago, so we are now, this year, celebrating 10 years in Plaster County. But a bigger event is really actually happening in September. The university has been in existence for 75 years, and on September 20th, we are going to be celebrating the event of 75 years of providing education. Just to give you a little bit of background, when the university came here in 2004, there were 400 students, I believe it was the first year. This past year, we had 1,200 students, and this year is even looking stronger as we go into the fall semester. And we're expanding our curriculums now and our degree programs into the science field and biology with the hope of having more healthcare sorts of things in the future. We're expanding our math areas so that hopefully, engineering will be something we'll be adding. So, as the only four-year college in Plaster County, we're honored to be a part of this community. And the way this community has accepted the university is just incredible. We just can't thank that enough. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention while I was here. So, thank you very much.
Great. I just wanted to comment also on the audit committee and the audit report. Having done hundreds of these throughout my professional career, the one way to understand the fiscal health of any organization is to take a look at, at the audit report as well as the annual financial report. Those two reports are critical to not only the county, but also to every organization and entity within the county that has a required audit. And I'm very thankful that we've got some dedicated folks that are willing to take the time to go through some very detailed documentation receipts and do all of the internal things that we do as a county. And for those of you that don't understand how this works, we have our own in-house auditors that audit various departments here. And then as a second layer of review, we also have an external auditor that comes in that isn't affiliated with the county, that's independent, that comes in and does their own evaluation. So, I'm very satisfied at the level of detail and as well as the level of competence that goes into these reports, you know, that basically reflect the fiscal health of the county and the county organization. So, I appreciate your leadership, Wayne, and thank you, Andy, and the rest of the team. So.
Thank you, Chairman Durant.
Great.
Appreciate it.
And we'll now move on to our ninth item here of the department items. It's a contract with Kaiser Marston Associates to prepare an infrastructure financing plan for the West Plaster and Sunset Industrial Areas. Michelle Kingsbury and Michael Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When the four supervisors approved the 2014-15 budget for the county, part of that was monies that were allocated for an update of the Sunset Industrial Area Plan. The SIA was last updated back in 1997, and one of the biggest limitations on implementing the plan that was put in place has been the infrastructure needs out in that area. And so, one of the first steps that staff is undertaking with this new program is to look at the infrastructure needs for the Sunset Industrial Area. As part of that, we have established a fiscal financial strike team made up of Andy Sisk from the Auditor's Office, Janine Windeshausen from the Treasury Tax Collector, Andy Heath from the County Executive Office, and legal support from Jerry Carden. We also have staff from CEDRA that are participating in that fiscal strike team. And so, the contract that is before you today is the first step in that process to line out what our needs are and what our options are as a county for moving forward with an infrastructure plan. And right now, I'll turn it over to Michelle for that presentation.
Good morning, and I am experiencing technical difficulties. It's like, can't figure out how to get the PowerPoint on, but we'll go ahead.
I have every confidence you can win this.
I'll go forward. As Michael mentioned, the item before you today is to seek authority to enter into a contract with Kaiser Marston to perform just tasks one and, if necessary, tasks two of their scope of work, which is included in your package. The not to exceed amount is $80,000. Essentially, what we're asking them to do on phase one is look at some financial feasibility analysis of putting together a comprehensive infrastructure financing plan for the West Plaster projects and Sunset Industrial Area. If that looks favorable and feasible, then we'd ask them to proceed forward with task two, which is preparation of the overall plan. Included within their scope of work is focusing on whether or not to establish, or if it's feasible to establish, what's known as an infrastructure financing district. They have, or we usually call them IFDs. They've been around for quite some time, I think since 1990. Not widely used, the most common one that people are most familiar with is Legoland was the first infrastructure financing district. Kaiser Marston's also established one in San Francisco in the Rincon Hill area, and one is pending in San Francisco in the waterfront area. They're not widely used, largely in part because of some voter requirements, but they function similar to how redevelopment function, where you carve off a portion of the tax increment to utilize for community-wide or regional types of infrastructure projects. As I mentioned, they do divert a portion of the tax increment for 30 years, very similar to redevelopment. And they do require to form the district and ultimately issue bonds, voter approval on them. The types of projects, as I mentioned, are region, kind of community-wide, that go beyond the project area, but benefit the project area, but also benefit the community as a whole. You know, we've got infrastructure, sewer, we mentioned the PowerPoint, water. We've been talking with PCWA and getting understanding of their water infrastructure requirements and needs to bring their infrastructure down through the over-water treatment plant down to the West Plaster area. And we'll continue those discussions in parallel fashion as we put together this comprehensive plan. The study area, we're looking at from a tax increment and evaluating that point of view, looking at the Regional University Project, the Sunset Industrial Area, and the proposed Placer Ranch area. And a map of that is included within your package. We're hoping to, with your approval of this contract, to get started quite quickly, as my esteemed colleagues that are sitting back there have put together. Step one, quickly. Step two would be putting together more of the infrastructure needs and getting Kaiser Marston underway. If we get through phase two in a positive fashion, we'd be coming back to your board with those results, some recommendations, and looking to proceed toward phase three, which is based, putting together all the formation documents for an infrastructure plan and financing district. So, with that, I think we can open it up with questions.
Great. Questions of the board? Questions at all? What, what is the timeliness for phase one?
Phase one, I would say the burden is on staff to get the information to Kaiser Marston's. They, once they get it, I think their scope of work indicated they can turn around phase one within a few weeks. The burden would be more so putting together the infrastructure data and information for them. That would take just a little bit of time on my behalf, but we can get them started quickly. We've already done quite a bit of background work on the financial side through Andy Sisk and Janine Windeshausen.
I certainly think it's important to explore the possibility and feasibility of, of what requirements are out there in both the Sunset Industrial Area, as well as Regional University and the west, I guess the northwest side in general. Because that, those areas are really going to be the economic engine of the future of the county. So, it's, I think it's a good, a good for all of us to understand, you know, what tax areas are, what, you know, if you, if you do this and, and, or you do that, what the implications are. It's always, you know, as, as an attorney myself, I like to have as much information as I can before making a decision on anything. So, hopefully, this will give us what we need to, to make those tough choices. Any questions from the public? Okay, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and bring this back to the board. All those in favor, say aye. Doesn't sound like there's any opposition. There's no abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. We'll now move to item 10, Plaster County Government Center Development Relocation Project. Robyn Holz.
Good morning, Chairman Durant, members of the board. I'm Rob Unholz, Capital Improvements Program Manager for Facility Services. The item before you is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the consultant services agreement with Moniz Architecture to provide design and construction services for the Plaster County Government Center Development and Relocation Project Number 4917 in North Auburn in an amount not to exceed $640,737 in budgeted net county costs. Staff is continuing negotiations for a ground lease with Costco Wholesale Corporation as your board directed on March 11th. In anticipation of successful negotiations, four facilities within the area of the ground lease will need to be relocated. This also provides an opportunity to consolidate and create operational efficiencies in the Government Center Corporation Yard and the sheriff, within the sheriff functions. To accomplish this work, Moniz Architecture was selected from a list of pre-qualified consultants to provide the scoping and programming required to move the parks and ground shop, the utility shop and yard, the sheriff's dive unit, and the Department of Public Works tire and engine barn. One of the parks and ground shops will move from Second Street to a site adjacent to their main shop on Third Street. This consists of a 2,160-square-foot pre-engineered metal building, propelledized material storage with a small office, and 1,440 square feet of covered outdoor storage. The utilities division, shop and yard will be relocated from F Avenue to Second Street adjacent to one of their existing facilities, and includes a 5,347-square-foot metal building that will store the vector trucks, various trailers, pumps, equipment, the welding area, staff restrooms, and a work area, as well as a 2,700-square-foot covered area to store additional generators equipment, wash-down area and steam cleaner. The sheriff's dive unit on F Avenue will be relocated to a site within their existing vehicle yard on B Avenue. This relocation consists of 5,568 square feet of metal building for workstations, training, debriefing, restroom, showers, lockers, three bays for boat and truck storage, maintenance work area, dive lockers and benches, as well as a 1,600-square-foot storage loft over the office area, and 1,800 square feet of covered outdoor storage for gear washing and additional vehicle storage. The DPW tire barn will be relocated to the south of their existing maintenance garage. The DPW tire, it will consist of 3,840 square feet of metal building for the storage of tires, engines, transmissions, axles, and miscellaneous stock. This work also includes area-for-sammmable storage and material storage and work benches. All of these, each of these projects is a separate project with its own site work and utilities. Moniz Architecture's proposal includes comprehensive design services for design and construction documents and specifications for the pre-engineered metal buildings, site development, and construction for four sites, cost estimating, plan checking, plan check submittal and responses, responses, construction administration services, all the way through punch list. In order to proceed with the Government Center Development Relocation Project, it's requested that your board approve the attached consultant agreement with Moniz Architecture and authorize the chairman to execute the contract in an amount not to exceed $640,737. The program level estimate of probable project, total project cost is $6,426,795, including 4.65 million in construction, the $640,737 for architecture and engineering services, $396,000 for project management, geotechnical materials testing and fees, and $740,000 in contingencies. There are sufficient funds in the fiscal year 2014-15. Capital Projects Fund, project number 4917, for these services. I'd be happy to answer any questions. With that, I'd request your approval and authorization for the chairman to execute the contract.
So, roughly 10% of the construction, or the total cost, is this piece here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board? Doesn't look like there's any questions. Any questions from the public? Okay, I'll bring this item back to the board. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. No, doesn't sound like there's any opposition and no abstentions, so this motion carries. We'll now move on to item 11, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care, Substance Use Treatment and Related Services. Maureen Bowden.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bosch and Council. With your permission, I could take, as a group, I have several items in sequence.
I will defer to our county council as to whether or not that is advisable.
I can speak to them as a group, as a, can.
Can we do that?
Whatever your pleasure is.
Or expediency?
Yeah, and take separate motions.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Excellent.
So, I'll be taking A through E, and then with your permission, G, medical clinics, and just review them all at once. So, I'm bringing you forward a continuing, contracts for the continuum of care of behavioral health and medical services, maximize efficiencies and cost effectiveness by utilizing local and regional community-based organizations. Adult System of Care successfully implements the public-private partnership approach, and these contracts are examples of that service model. In addition, I'm requesting approval for two revenue agreements for behavioral health services, so 15 contracts total. So, let's start. Item A, request approval for 12 provider agreements for substance abuse treatment and transitional housing for a total not to exceed $9,177,310, of which approximately $444,000 is net county cost. Those are two-year contracts from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. And we would also request you authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign subsequent amendments. Substance abuse treatment leads to reduced crime and enhanced public safety, as you know, as well as savings in jail bed days, healthcare costs, and costs associated with child welfare. Countywide, more than 1,300 county residents choose local treatment in order to work on their recovery and did so last year. This number is expected to increase as we have more opportunities with the implementation of the Affordable Care Act and increased Medicare services for enhanced services in terms of intensive outpatient treatment and eventually residential. We also know that programs that are based in collaborative partnerships, such as our Drug Court Program, AB 109, and Veterans Court, have been proven through research to improve success rates for those involved in the criminal justice system. These agreements include a continuum of care, including medication, assisted therapy, evidence base for opiate addiction, detoxification, residential, alclinic treatment, educational programming, transitional housing, and services, services for adolescents, women, children, and adults. So, the specific contracts are in your board packet. I'll just review potentially the names, and certainly, if you want more detail, happy to provide it. So, Aegis Medical Services, Center Point, Community Recovery Resources, Corinnea Foster Homes, New Leaf Counseling Services, PES, Progress House, Recovery Now, Roseville Home Start, CR Mental Wellness Group, CR Native Alliance, and Latino Leadership Council. So, moving on to item B, a request approval for an agreement with California Psychiatric Transition, CPT, to approve. Transition, CPT, to approve mandated medically necessary mental health services for Placer County residents with the highest levels of need, again a two-year contract, July 1st, 14 through June 30th, 16. This contract is $800,000 with a $480,000 county net cost, and we would also ask the director, you to approve the director to sign subsequent amendments. So we talked about IMD last time I was here, Placer County, this is an intense service for a very, very few number of people, 23 total, but we expect only one or two to be in this particular program. It's got a specialized program of competency restoration, and an example of what happened in this last year is that we had somebody that had been at state hospital for several years not restored to competency. We actually moved that human being to this program, and after 17 months, this person was restored to competency. Again, expensive program, but we feel well worth, well worth the dollars in terms of moving people into the right direction. Item D is a request to approve a contract with Nevada County Behavioral Health who provide our phone crisis triage, both for intake and crisis services, again a two-year contract from July 1st, 14 through June 30th, 16. This contract is for $992,160 with $396,000 of net county cost. Since 2009, Nevada County Behavioral Health Services has partnered with Placer County to provide the most cost-effective and efficient, efficient phone crisis services. So this is a 24-hour phone for intake, as well as crisis services for multiple programs, adult protective services, in-home support services, but the majority really mental health and crisis services. They field about 24,000 calls, they did that in 2013, we expect them to field 26,000 calls in the coming year. That level of services, a real person answers the phone and has a real conversation, and they can help triage people to the resources that they need. So that's that program. Item G, the last service purchase request is in a, is a request to approve a contract, contract amendment. This is with, for medical staffing services with WellSpace Incorporated. We reviewed this last time I was here, where we needed an increase, but this is to actually extend them for another quarter, from June 30th, 14 to September 30th of 14, for $130,000, of which $27,000 would be net county cost, and to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign this amendment and any subsequent amendments. Placer County has used WellSpace successfully to hire doctors for our medical clinic, and in which we treat over 8,000 people annually. The recruitment of qualified providers has been in challenge in Placer, and we actually have two providers that are working at WellSpace right now in our medical clinic, and so this extension will help to keep those two secured in providing the medical services that they're providing to us as we're working through with WellSpace, sort of contracting options for these two individuals through the first quarter of this year, and we'll be evaluating that and then be back to your board with a solution that is more permanent. I now have two revenue agreements. The first revenue agreement is an amendment with the California Department of Healthcare Services, not so timely, it's an amendment for 1314 to increase the contract by $269,000. We were aware of this amendment, and we have allocated the dollars appropriate. These are substance abuse prevention and treatment dollars that are federal pass-through through the state. We use them to continue our, our continuum of care with the funding. One thing in particular that we do in the adult system of care is we have established a screening clinic, that is a walk-in screening clinic, particularly effective for people that have substance abuse issues and aren't very good at scheduling appointments immediately when they need assistance. So we serve approximately 600 people, that's a growing number with this screening clinic, very effective way to reach people. And the rest of the programs that we're using with these dollars really are the contracts, the 12 contracts that I identified earlier. The last revenue agreement is with Nevada County for their purchase of our inpatient psychiatric health services beds. So Placer County, I mean, so the contract is, is revenue from Nevada County, again for two years, July 1st, 14 through June 30th, 16, in an amount not to exceed $648, $600, and to authorize the director to sign subsequent amendments. We have a long history of working with Nevada County and providing these resources to them. This actually provides us for up to one bed with some additional beds if available, they pay the full freight of those beds. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but recommend approval of this group of contracts and agreements.
Ms. Bowman, I have a question. With regards to the 2014, 2016, was there an increase in the budget at all from the 2012 to 2014?
This is for the, this psychiatric.
The overall, yeah. There's a list here that on page 140 of our package says contracts for residential out client.
The 12 substance abuse.
Exactly, right.
When we, no, they stay in the same rate. It's a two-year contract, and we keep the rates the same if, if in negotiations or if there is changes next year, sometimes we amend those contracts, but we would come back to the board or within our department authority if there was a change. But at this point, the contracts are for a two-year at a similar rate.
Okay, great. Any, I don't see any questions from the board here. Any questions from the public? I have been informed by our legal counsel that because there are no resolutions afforded to each one of these, or any of these at all, items A through E plus G can be taken on a single roll call, or a single vote, so if, if I'm going to indulge the board as to what their preference is. Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any, doesn't hear it, sound like there's any no votes, any opposition or any abstentions? Thank you very much, Ms. Bowman. We're going to move on now to, this is item F, Richard Connect, Children's System of Care.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, board members. The Adult and Children's System of Care maintain contracted relationships with a network of outpatient providers of mental health services in order to meet state and federal mandates. These agreements together facilitate the delivery of mental health and behavioral care for some 500 residents each year, leading to better outcomes for individuals and families and at lower cost to the county. High-quality outpatient care helps children remain at home and school and assists all residents to avoid hospitalizations. These services require 128,000 local county funding to access 672,000 state and federal funds. I'd recommend your board's approval and be, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great, doesn't look like there's any questions from the board, any questions from the public on this item? I'll bring this back to the board. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? No opposition, no abstentions, the motion carries. We'll now move, thank you, Mr. Connect. We'll move on to item number 12, Public Works, a reward of contract 1184 roadway surface treatment, summer 2014.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This next item, we're asking you to award and execute the construction contract with Telfer Highway Technologies for the roadway surface treatment, summer 2014 project, in the amount of $876,781, and also authorize the Director of Public Works to issue change orders up to 10% of the contract amount. We bid this job in, in early June, and we received four bids. Telfer was the low bidder at 876,781, which unfortunately this year was 25% over my engineer's estimate. On this time last year, the, the low bidder was about 30% under, so it's, it's reflective of, of what we see with oil and gas prices. This project includes about 24 miles of roadway, mostly in the North Auburn and Colfax-Wimar area, so we're excited to get that done. Let's see, we have available funding in the CSA budgets as well as a small portion of road funds, and with that, present it to your board and answer any questions that you may have.
Great, doesn't look like there are any questions on behalf of the board. Are there any questions from the public? Okay, bring it back to the board. Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Doesn't sound like there's any opposition or abstentions, so the motion carries. We'll now move on to item 12B, State of California Government, or State of California Grant Agreement, Proposition 84 funding.
Greetings Chairman, members of the board. Peter Krass with Public Works. Yes, with this item, the actions for your consideration today relate to receiving over $1.7 million in grant funding for water quality improvements in Kings Beach from the state of California. Specifically, the grant funding will support construction of what's called the Lower Chipmunk Outfall Project, which will include a number of hardscape, drainage, and stormwater treatment facilities, and revegetation to improve runoff conditions in a portion of Kings Beach. These improvements will ultimately help protect the clarity and quality of Lake Tahoe. It's also important to point out that this new grant funding supports a project that is separate from the current commercial core improvement project construction. Even though the CCIP, as we call it, has numerous runoff improvements, additional projects like this one is needed to comprehensively reach the goal of overall improved water quality of Kings Beach. This state grant represents a significant leveraging opportunity by which other grants will be used to implement the project, along with only using a small portion of the department's road fund on the order of $300,000. This amount represents just over 17% of the state grant amount. The grant requires a 10% local matching fund, so we have exceeded the local match requirement. However, the state grant will not support road reconstruction, so the road fund dollars that we plan to use and TRPA funds will support this part of the project, as some of our county roads will be torn up with underground drainage improvements, and the department is dedicated to providing new road surfaces as part of the project. We anticipate that the project will go to construction in 2015 and occur primarily along Lower Chipmunk Street and a portion, and a portion of Brockway Vista Avenue east of Coon Street. So with that, I would ask your board to approve the two actions items in the department memorandum as written, and happy to address any questions that you might have.
Okay, I don't see any questions by the board, any questions from the public? All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Doesn't sound like there's any opposition, no abstentions, the motion carries. We'll now move on to item 13, our county executive, Placer Public Employees Organization, MOU, and Placer County Code Updates. Ms. Peters.
Good morning Chairman, board members. I'm joined here today with Nancy Mittler and Nicole Lopez to bring forth the PPO contract for 14 to 17 through July of 17. I'd like to start by recognizing and thanking the team that was in negotiations. As you know, it started last September and ended in May with the ratification by the PPO members, more than 80% voting for the contract. The county members are Donna Williamson, Therese Leonard, Nancy Mittler, Ann Craig, Nicole Lopez, Ann McNellis, and Mark Rathie. PPO employee members, Aaron Johnson, Matt Bartholomew, Edmund Sullivan, Jennifer Tisdale, Darrell Hedricks, and Rebecca Like. Now I'd like to take you through a summary of the ordinance, wage increases in the amount of 6% starting in December of 14 and going through the three and a half year contract through July 21st of 17. Increase in, in lieu of health for, into your 401K of $140 per month. Also, the long-term disability elimination, improvements in the coverage for the dental program with implants being added, and an increase in tuition reimbursement of $700 per year. In addition, we'll have a increase in the standby duty flat rate to $4 for weekdays, weekends, and holidays, elimination of county payments for taxable meal reimbursements, and clarification and updates to the practices for leaves of absences, callback duty, seniority calculations during the layoff process, inmate oversight pay, leaves of absence integration hours, as well as other terms and conditions. This will improve the efficiency of our personnel processes. The county's future ability to fund these priorities is in a large part due to prior actions taken by your board in response to the recent economic downturn. As the country's economic outlook continues to improve, we are optimistic that modest revenue growth will continue, keeping in line with the Board of Supervisors' commitment to employee engagement, as well as preparing for expected pension increases. The negotiating team has worked closely and respectfully with PPO in a collaboratively negotiated agreement. And if there's no questions, I, the actions I'm asking you to take are adopt the memorandum of understanding between the county of Placer, the Placer Public Employees Organization, for the general and professional units through June 30th of 2017, and authorize the chairman to sign seven originals. Introduction of an ordinance adjusting the compensation and employment terms for Placer Public Employee Organization represented employees, and introduction of an uncodified ordinance adjusting salaries, compensation, and benefits for Placer Public Employee Organization represented employees.
Great, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I want to commend our team, as well as the PPEO team, for coming to this resolution of their employment contract. As we all know, that labor issues, especially when you're talking about negotiating contracts in an era where you have a smaller and smaller piece of the ply dedicated to these types of issues, creates a lot of friction, and there's the potential to have very strained relations, and I want to express my appreciation for the professionalism of the team that you've brought to this and our other negotiations that we have, because I think it lends a hint of credibility to, to the office and to what we do, that, you know, we're, we're willing to negotiate and discuss these issues to arrive at some type of mutual understanding. That being said, I don't see any comments from the, from the board, any comments from the public? I don't see any. I'll bring this back to the board.
I will second, Mr. Chairman. With that under discussion, I have my concerns with the agreement as it's in front of us today. As is our practice, our board engages in conversations on these items in closed session with council president and with council's advice. I have made my concerns known to my colleagues. However, there is support on our board to move this forward, all given that there are only three of us here today. All a no vote by me would accomplish would be to delay this item and thereby add additional cost to this, and so I certainly don't want to do that, so I will be voting in the affirmative in the reflection of, of my colleagues' support for this agreement.
And I do want to just clarify one point. It can't, kind of came across that there's going to be a six, that there was a 6% increase, that's over time.
Over three and a half years.
Over three and a half years, so it's two, two, one, one.
Correct.
Just to clarify that for, for the public. So is that a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, we have no opposition, no abstentions, so the motion carries. And with that, I believe, I believe that is the end of our board agenda today. We do not have a closed session, so for the first time in a long time, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned. Come on, Lefty.